Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the planning commission. I'd like to ask Mr. Turner to explain how the public can participate and provide public comments.
Yes, thank you Chair Dorn regarding the procedures for communicating tonight. The commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of meeting. For those participating, presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we will ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation. A member of staff will sign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, if you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. With that, I will hand it back to you Chair Dorn.
Thank you. So I'd like to call the role now Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, I'm here.
Mr. DeCarty.
Hello.
Mr. Harris.
Good evening.
Mr. Riggs.
President.
Mr. Tate.
President.
And with myself, that makes six commissioners present. Commissioner Kennedy is traveling tonight and will be with us. So we do have a quorum. Ms. Sandmeyer, do we have reports and announcements tonight? Do you have anything to tell us?
Yes, good evening Chair Dorn and Commissioners. So there's no city council meeting this week. Looks like the next one will be on December 7th. And that may include some items the planning commission has seen that that agenda hasn't been finalized. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Ms. Sandmeyer? Not seeing any. I'm going to open the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We have one item on the agenda. This is item B1, specific plan amendments, architectural control revision, use permit revision, development agreement amendment, and environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act sequel for Cyrus Sanandaji at 1300 El Camino Real Spring Line. We have a staff report, which I'll ask Ms. Sandmeyer about in a moment. We have four subparts to this item on the agenda. Recommendation to City Council on specific plan amendments to increase the maximum public benefit bonus level floor area ratio if they are from 1.5 to 1.55 in ECR, NE, our district under certain circumstances. Two, architect, architectural control revision for compliance with specific plan standards and guidelines, including determination of a public benefit bonus to exceed the base level FAR floor area ratio standards for previously approved mixed-use development consisting of office, residential, and community-serving uses on a 6.4 acre site. The proposed revision includes modification to the basement and second levels of each office building, which would increase the project's growth floor area, GFA, by up to approximately 9,000 square feet. Reconfiguration of the primary residential entry at the intersection of Oak Grove Avenue and Garwood Way for improved accessibility, and modification of a portion of the previously designated community-serving use space facing Oak Grove Avenue to a multifunction space. The increase in gross floor area would require payment of an in lieu fee in compliance with the city's below-market rate housing program as recommended by the city, by the Housing Commission, and including included in the conditions of approval. Number three, use permit revision for hazardous materials for a fuel tank supplying a diesel emergency backup generator, expanded outdoor seating associated with full limited service restaurants, and the onsite and offsite consumption of alcohol, beer, wine, and spirits, and beverage sales establishments inclusive of a mobile beer truck. In accordance with requirements of the California State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, to approve the offsite sale of alcohol, the planning commission must make a finding that the off sale of alcohol at this location serves a public convenience or necessity. And number four, recommendation to the City Council on Development Agreement, DA Amendment. The project sponsors secure vested rights and for the city to secure public benefit. The city prepared an addendum to the certified final infill EIR, considered the above requested entitlements. We have a report on this item from Sandmeyer. Do you have anything to add or changes to the report?
Yes, good evening again. So I have a short staff presentation.
Okay.
Let's see. Let me make sure this is working correctly. Okay. Von, could you help me put it in the right mode? All right, thank you. So this is the Spring Line project located at 1300 El Camino Real. For some background information, the project site is located on the east side of El Camino between Oak Grove Avenue and Glenwood Avenue. The project was previously called Station 1300. In 2017, the City Council approved a mixed-use development consisting of office, residential, and community-serving uses on the 6.4 acre site. And so the approval included a floor area ratio or FAR of 1.5. The applicant is now seeking a specific plan amendment, and that would increase the maximum public benefit bonus level FAR from 1.5 to 1.55 in the ECR Northeast Residential District of the specific plan under certain circumstances. The applicant is also seeking architectural control revision to increase the gross floor area up to approximately 9,000 square feet or an FAR of 1.53 to reconfigure the primary residential entry, and that's at Oak Grove and Garwood, and to pay an in lieu fee in compliance with the city's BMR housing program for their new square footage. The application also includes a use permit revision, and that's for hazardous materials and for expanded outdoor seating associated with restaurants and for the onsite and offsite consumption of alcohol. Lastly, the application includes a development agreement amendment, and that would allow the applicant to secure vested rights and for the city to secure a public benefit. In this case, a payment of $300,000 to complete a quiet zone study and related projects if funds are left over. So staff, these are the staff recommendations. Staff recommends that the planning city, excuse me, the planning commission recommend that the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the specific plan, approve the architectural controller revision and use permit revision, and recommend that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement amendment. And so these three actions are resolutions, which means four commissioners voting in affirmative are required for them to pass. And so that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions to the commission from Ms. Sandmeyer now? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will just add for the record that I did tour the site with Mr. Sanandaji. But I don't think that that will affect my ability to be impartial in this application. So I think now we can move to the applicant's presentation, whatever order you want to do it in.
Good evening Commissioners. I apologize, I'm just trying to get control. There we go. Good evening Commissioners and thank you very much again for making the time and allowing us to visit with you to share our presentation and request for approval as it relates to the Spring Line project. We touched on the we touched on the modifications that we're seeking as part of our annual DA compliance review, which we provided a couple of months ago and have had the opportunity over the last year and a half or so to, that we've been involved with this project to socialize the variety of rather minor modifications that we're seeking to really enhance the functionality and the operations of this project, given the complicated intermixing of the uses of residential, retail, and office, as well as a large parking structure that serves all of those tenants and also the broader community. And our goal really from the onset of the project, when we came in and took over, was to evaluate what design was at the time under construction and had been halted due to, due to the COVID since in that March, April timeframe of 2020, and also to evaluate and understand what the post sort of COVID environment would require of the built environment and really to position this project for success and to ensure that it wouldn't be left vacant or blighted, leaving a rather large scar on the downtown area and community. And so with that in mind, we had taken a pretty comprehensive lens to evaluate the project from top to bottom and understand how all these uses were to come together. We concluded that there is a series of, again, minor modifications that needed to occur in order to enhance the marketability and the leaseability and eventually functionality of the buildings to the benefit of the residents and the community at large, as well as the occupants, the proposed occupants of the building at the office, retail, and residential components. And this is just a high-level summary of the variety of changes, and the balance of the presentation will go into some technical details as it relates to the proposed changes. But at a high level, part of the redesign as it relates to the access to the residential building, which is at the corner of Garwood and Oak Grove, really seeks to actually address ADA access to the residential building, which, as we'll show later on in the presentation, was in our mind not provided at the level that it should have been. We're also looking to further activate that corner, which was part of the original approvals or conditional approvals for as a CSU space from pure CSU to what we're calling multifunction publicly accessible space, which again served the same purpose and will host a cafe open to the public. There, the majority of the other changes as it relates to the FAR that was referenced in the Sandmeyer's presentation have to do with support space that is in its entirety located in the parking garage. So all but 400 square feet of the request proposed FAR change is below grade. And none of the 9,000 feet roughly that we're seeking the FAR approvals for in terms of these modifications seek to actually enlarge the project in any way. These are really, as we'll get into later in the presentation, are really, again, within the existing built environment and looking to provide for enhanced functionality. There are two use-related requests that are also included, and that just has to do with the fact that we are at a later stage in the project and we've received conditional TCO for the office buildings and are hoping to secure as a consequence of this project modification approval, the completion of the residential building in the early spring such that the entire project can then receive final CVO by the May-June timeframe of 2022. There are a series of tenants that we have proceeded in advanced discussions with and really are conditioned upon us being able to deliver the space in a way that can be utilized practically and functionally for them as it relates really to all of those retail and restaurant uses. So in anticipation of that and in coordination with them and the ABC, we are pursuing this use permit to allow for outdoor seating for food and beverage, which of course in today's sort of COVID environment has proven to be even more critical to the survival of these businesses, let alone their ability to actually open up new locations. And finally, there's a technical matter as it relates to a use permit for the already previously approved backup generator that exists onsite, has already been built and was permitted and approved. But this has to do with actually a use permit with respect to the fuel itself that we'll get into. At a high level, the areas that the changes really apply to when looking at the overall site plan are those areas in circled in green. I'm not sure if my cursor is viewable or not, but this is the central plaza area. These are the two catwalks that are above grade on the second floor, which I'll share some additional imagery with, and this is the fountain area in front of the residential entrance and that ground floor. What we're looking to call multifunctional space, which will be a cafe and additional seating and entryway for the residential area as well. I'll skip over this as Ms. Sandmeyer summarized our request and staff's recommendation. But it's a series of approvals that would ultimately lead to a city council resolution to support these changes. And to the extent there's any questions with respect to the adjustment of the 0.05 for the FAR, really the key point here is that the increased area is really is subject to strict limitations. The gross floor area are all going to be, the proposed gross floor area adjustments are all going to be within the subsurface footprint of the low grade. There are only two areas that the FAR affects, which are on the second floor of each of the office buildings, and that really needs to address circulation deficiency, and we'll show some imagery of that here shortly. And that's really the key to think about here. We're really not trying to in any way modify or enhance the project beyond addressing these operational deficiencies. This is an image from the original approvals that demonstrate or illustrate the entryway to the residential building, again, at that corner of Oak Grove and Garwood. And if you notice, there is no ADA access into the primary entrance of the residential building here, and despite this being in sketch form, we'll show you the plan view as well. There was no ramping at all that was contemplated here. There was actually a secondary entrance for ADA access through a side door and a really long and narrow corridor that led to a one-stop elevator, which we felt was not appropriate, given that we wanted to provide for equal access to all. And that then really led us to think through ways of further activating this corner, which we'll show as well. And so as part of our revision, we kept the fountain and the original intent of all the landscaping, but with our civil engineer and our architect, we're able to actually figure out how to accomplish the appropriate ramping here and grade change, or to navigate the grade change to allow for ADA access into these main double doors. We closed up this sort of side door entrance, which made it feel like a secondary type entrance to the building, and instead are proposing a bifold roll-up door here that would allow for an indoor-outdoor connection and really allow for spillover activation at this corner, which was part of the original intent of labeling this as a CSU-type use. This whole space will cater to the cafe, which we're subsidizing, to open up on day one and not relying on having to bring in a cafe operator, which again in today's environment would certainly prove challenging. And then additionally, with the depth of this space that was originally designed, would also be challenging to to actually occupy. And you can see, we haven't changed the location of the elevator or anything else here, which was originally accessed through this alley, or through this corridor, excuse me. This depth here was really not something that could have been tenanted when you took into consideration the circulation that was that was originally in here to address the ADA issues. And so we tried to solve this marketability and really from a business operation viability standpoint by creating this as a multifunctional connection point, again, that's open to the public and services of the public, really as an extension of the Caltrain station across the way and to serve as a beacon of activation there for anyone visiting or using that Caltrain station or otherwise. But you can see on the left, the plan view of the original footprint of the fountain, and then similarly here, the footprint, again, the fountain's actually exactly the same. It's simply the ramping that's been integrated in a more organic way to address that ADA access through the front. This is at present the condition of this entry sequence, and certainly one of the components that is holding up the delivery of the housing. We were optimistic that we would be able to TCO the project in early January. But certainly this, along with the series of other modifications, are sort of the final steps that we need to complete in order to be able to successfully finish the project and start to lease the 183 residential units that are here and start providing much-needed housing to the community. Just a quick snapshot of what the proposed use within that space will be, that multifunctional space that we're talking about. This cafe area, we're bringing in an operator on a management license rather than have to find a third party that would come in on a pure lease basis. Again, just given the depth and challenges in this space, this would be open seating that again would serve this as overflow for this cafe, that the cafe would service, and that would be open to the public at all times during business hours. Again, looking to really honor that original CSU goal as part of the original conditions of approval. In terms of the basement revisions, and I'm going to be cognizant of your time, so I'll skip over a decent amount of the technical components, and I'm happy to address any questions in Q and A, but just some indicative representative photographs of the basement condition. These lobbies downstairs are completely unsecured. The parking garage, for those that have visited, is expansive. It's 1,000 stalls almost, and it spans two two entire floors, as much as we've come in to mitigate by painting a lot of the columns or all of the columns white by changing all the spray foam insulation that we've used to white, which will eventually of course get gets sort of darker as a vehicle to use the space, and all the lighting and so on that we would that we have introduced, again, within the restrictions of Title 24 poses. It is not a welcoming or safe condition in today's environment, and what our goal is as part of introducing secured lobbies at the bottom, and this is a B1 and B2 of both the north and south office buildings, but also the retail elevator core that the public is to utilize and the residential elevator core or lobby core as well. The idea is that we are securing the parking structure in its totality. Even for visitors, you would be granted credentials such that really it's a controlled environment, but we wanted to provide that additional sort of layer of comfort and safety by having a secured lobby at the bottom of each of these elevators, again, to provide for that overall sense of safety. Additionally, some other considerations as well. We need to provide for mail room access, which USPS refuses to service at the plaza level. And they're planning on servicing or are servicing at the moment using this temporary mailbox here for the south office building, which has one tenant in it at the moment. It was quite a trailblazer, given this is the condition. They're still working around and we're an active job site for the balance of the site, but this gives you a general sense of what we're, what we're looking to mitigate here. All the red sort of highlights the areas that we're talking about that was originally approved, and it shows you the rough sort of expansion of some of these spaces, again, to accommodate for those lobbies and secured access and so on. We actually are expanding, are proposing to expand the fitness area as well, really to accommodate larger showers to encourage bicycle transportation as an alternative means of commuting as well. Similarly, at the B2 level, there's just more lobbies or extended secured sort of lobby areas, and we're eating up some of the unused parking space here to provide for maintenance and otherwise building engineering storage for the building management. Some more indicative or representative imagery. This is the second floor of the south office building. When we came in, there was no way of demising any of these floors. The core of the building, neither of the buildings was actually designed. There was a steel brace that went across the entirety of every floor. We had to change to these cave braces in order to allow for the double door entry into each of these suites, so we could demise the floor plan, the floor plates. On the second floor, however, there's a big cutout, and so there's really no way of accessing this without essentially jumping over this, which creates a bit of a challenge. Our second floor is compromised on both the north and south office building, and really the only square footage that we're talking about that is not in the subgrade or in the basement levels is to install a glass catwalk across here to sort of infill the space to allow for the same condition that exists on the third floor. On the second floors, again, to allow for those demising of the floor plate. In terms of the outdoor seating, prior to us taking over the project, there were no real demising walls to identify where the retail and the CSU was to be located. We've now come in and addressed a lot of the or all of the deficiencies in the base building infrastructure to accommodate and allow for the various uses that we are proposing here and that we've had and continue to have advanced discussions with some fascinating, some really great operators who are really excited about being in Memlo Park, but who need, you know, back-of-house space, you know, in the basement, for example, to stage trash so that they don't have to drag food or trash or otherwise across the plaza level to our trash enclosure up here that's off of Garwood at all times of the day. at all times of the day. The seating area that we're looking to expand really just is limited to the plaza area, and we'll share some pictures of that here shortly. And I think it's worth noting that the liquor license that we are seeking approval for in terms of sales for off-site really is driven by the fact that we have a market that we're proposing that would be operated by one of the restaurants. Think of it as something more of a, you know, cross between Dean and DeLuca and Italy, that sort of idea. It's going to have a gelato stand in there. It'll have cold cuts. It'll have meats. It'll have beer and wine and liquor and so on. And so that's really where that Tech 21 license is looking to be placed here. Additionally, in terms of what was referenced, is that beer cart or beer truck? We're in advanced discussions with a brewery that wants to open a taproom, and they want to have a mobile beer truck that they'd be able to drive up from the parking garage below to activate this plaza area and sort of do events or otherwise beer garden type activation that again, is open to the whole public and seeks to really utilize this plaza area as originally intended as a welcoming destination for everyone in the neighborhood and the community. And just another view of the current state of the office buildings and that plaza area. And finally, with respect to the use permit for the diesel, this is our existing and approved generator enclosure. And a picture of the generator that's installed, which was installed in accordance with all the permits that had been approved for the generator, the generator building and in consultation with our acoustical engineers to adhere to all local ordinances, sound noises and so on. Really, the request here has to do with the use permit itself for the diesel. I would add that the barrier or quality management permit has already been issued for this as well. And FIRE had signed off on the entire life safety plan predicated on the presence of this generator, which in the absence of which, we would have never been able to obtain our original permit. The generator is strictly used to service as a backup source of power for the life safety systems in the entirety of the of the project. So the residential, the two office buildings and the parking structure. In terms of public benefit, we took cues from the original approval and methodology associated with the same and approximated a $300,000 cash payment, which was extrapolated from the fees paid originally in terms of the bonus area that was originally granted. And in discussions to date, both with community members and the city, the idea is to utilize those funds to advance the quiet zone study that is already underway or that has been initially funded and to contribute any remaining funds to the actual implementation of any quiet zones or for any other downtown amenities that the city deems appropriate. The payment of the BMR associated fee, in-luck fee of $63,000 is also included, as well as all the other fees in accordance to the master fee schedule. And that in-luck payment had been approved by the Housing Commission when we visited them last month. And with that, I just wanted to thank you and open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission now? I want to go to public comment before we go to commentary from the commission. But if we have clarifying questions, now's an appropriate time. Okay, not seeing any. We'd like to open it up to public comment at this time. Mr. Turner, can you remind the public how they can participate and provide public comments now?
Yes. If you would like to give public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in to tonight's meeting, I don't see anybody calling in, but if you are, click star nine on your phone's keypad, and that will let us know that you have a comment. I do have a couple of raised hands right now. As a reminder as well, if there are multiple people speaking from the same account, just let us know at the beginning of your comment, so we don't skip over a second commenter. So at this time, I am going to introduce Marcia Abramowitz. Marcia, you will have three minutes to give your public comment. Please state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation. And you should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Abramowitz, and I live in Felton Gables, and I've been a resident of Menlo Park for over 25 years. I am calling in to express my support for the Spring Line projects modifications, and I hope their proposed upgrades are approved. A brief story, a few weeks back, I enjoyed an hour or so on a sunny day sitting by the fountain area in the Spring Line Plaza doing email while my car was being serviced across the street. Normally during COVID, I'd have walked home and then back again, not wanting to sit in the waiting area for an extended period. But the Spring Line Plaza was absolutely lovely, and I could definitely see it as a gathering place for the public. In fact, if a beer truck had been there, I may very well have had one of those while I waited. Also, I look forward to Spring Line's much-needed new housing and the residents it will bring, who will hopefully contribute to more vitality downtown. And finally, as a neighborhood lead on the citywide quiet zone initiative, I'm delighted to see the $300,000 in public benefits going towards supporting what will hopefully become the city's largest public benefit project, freeing us of train horns day and night. So in sum, I encourage you to approve Spring Line's plans, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, we have another hand raised?
We do. At this time, I will introduce Fran Den. Fran, you'll have three minutes to give your public comment. Please state your name, address, political jurisdiction, and/or organizational affiliation. And you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Good evening. Fran Dean, Menlo Park, Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for the opportunity to comment this evening on 1300 El Camino Real Spring Line project. We agree with the staff recommendation and request that through your consideration, you recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the specific plan to increase the maximum public benefit bonus level FAR from 1.5 to 1.55, that you approve the architectural control revision for compliance with the specific plan standards and guidelines. Approve the use permit revision for hazardous materials, expanded outdoor seating, and onsite off-site beverage consumption. And finally, recommend the city council adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement amendment for the project sponsor to secure vested rights and for the city to secure public benefit. As a reminder, the El Camino Real Downtown specific plan was adopted almost 10 years ago, July 2012, based on studies of market demand, opportunity sites, and assessment of development potential. It was intended to establish a framework for private and public improvements on El Camino Real. Again, as a framework, a plan encourages community-oriented development, but with the opportunity for review or project-specific modification to optimize the outcome. We believe that tonight's requests are just that, an optimization of a currently approved project as well as recognition of safety enhancements in COVID market shifts. The community certainly looks forward to the revitalization of El Camino Real. We have waited a long time for this. And Spring Line, as a mixed-use development project, will address this long-awaited need. Thanks very much for your consideration this evening, and hopefully you will follow staff recommendations. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public that wants to speak now?
I do not see any additional hands raised at this time. Just as a reminder, if you do have a comment, click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're calling in to today's meeting. Maybe we give it a minute.
Yeah, I think people have kind of had noticed since we've had a couple of speakers already, so there's no hands raised now. I think I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. We have commissioners that would like to speak on this project. While people are formulating comments, I actually had a question for the applicant. I did tour the side. I understand the necessity or the convenience, the desire for the lobbies in the parking garage. The ADA access totally makes sense to me. I understand, you know, the diesel generator and kind of the bureaucratic ledge in the approvals for that. One part that I am curious about is the plaza and the beer truck. You know, you've got 10 licensed premises around that plaza. I understand, you know, COVID has increased desire for outdoor spaces for restaurants and bars, but I'm a little surprised at the beer truck. It's kind of unusual. And I'm just wondering if you could help us understand why with 10 licensed premises around the perimeter that you also need a beer truck in the plaza?
Thank you, Chair Dorn. The, so the beer truck is not in addition to or competitive with the proposed retail use on Oak, which is going to be located on Oak Grove. The challenge with the location on Oak Grove is that there's actually not a lot of outdoor seating potential, given the depth and the width of the sidewalk. And so, given that we are planning on furnishing the entirety of that plaza, with the exception of the fire lane itself, which we can't populate with furniture, the idea was to encourage activation in that space and to essentially extend the ability for the public to be able to enjoy the offerings of the taproom and/or any other restaurant in that area. It's, this is more of an ABC requirement. That's to say that in order for us to be able to serve any beer and wine, we need to obtain this approval from the city. And Steve, who's on with us as well, can speak to that a little bit more from a technical and use standpoint as well. But that's the intention, is to allow us to, again, activate that area and the the surroundings of fountain area.
So if you didn't have the use permit for the beer truck, would people be able to buy a beer in the taproom and carry it out of the plaza?
No, I don't believe so. And that's part of why we want to sort of allow for that to occur.
Okay, so if you have, yeah, Mr. Atkinson or anyone can speak to that.
Yeah, let me, let me just, if I can address that, thanks, Chair Dorn. Yeah. The ABC basically requires that there be kind of some kind of rope or barrier around the outdoor seating. So in other words, in the taproom, you could sit out in the unlimited amount of seating on Oak Grove, but you could not carry your beer around to the plaza. They would not permit that. Similarly, on the plaza, you know, we've shown these areas, you know, the circle area where we intend to expand the seating, and there would be barriers there. So people, when they're consuming their alcoholic beverages, have to stay within those barriers. So you can't just kind of generally walk around. So that is Cyrus says, if people want to be able to enjoy a beer from the taproom in the plaza, we need to do it the way we're proposing. Perhaps our liquor laws at some point will be changed, but.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other members of the commission that would like to speak? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Chair Dorn. I appreciate that. I will say that related to the reasoning behind the changes being requested this evening, and most specifically recommending that the council adopt the ordinance amending the specific plan as it relates to the public benefit for the bonus level, flurry ratio from 1.5 to 1.55 is fine. Approving of the use permit revision for hazardous materials, and then talking about the sale of alcohol. I'm fine with that as well. I do have some questions as it relates to the increase in floor area requiring a payment of an in-luck fee in compliance with the city's BMR housing program, and then more specifically as it relates to the $300,000 that goes to the downtown amenity fund or for otherwise is talked about this evening. And just as background, knowing that previously, a payment of $2.1 billion has been paid by the applicant pursuant to the, or is due. I don't know the status of it in terms of the staging of that payment, but that was part of the development agreement. So 2.1 million, and this is an additional $300,000. So what I wanted to go through the chair, if it's permissible and ask staff about, is talk a little bit more about this quiet zone feasibility study, what it is, who it benefits, and some of the background and of it.
So basically, it's related to the train and as far as I understand, the horn, them honking the horn. Unfortunately, I apologize. I don't know all the details, but there's a feasibility study that's been budgeted for by the city. And so this additional money would be in case additional funds are needed or also if a project identified out of the study could be covered by this 300,000. And additionally, if there's still funds available after all that, it could go into the downtown amenity fund. And I don't know if the applicant has a little more information on that.
Steve, go ahead. I can add a little context. Go ahead.
Okay, so just to confirm, the entire 2.1 million has been paid. One part it was paid, I think, at building permit, and one part was paid. What is it? I think over the summer, but both parts of that payment have been paid. And I'm not sure what the rest of the question is, but if you'd like, I can address kind of my, our thought process in terms of the calculation of the public benefit payment. If that's.
Thank, thank you for that. I don't, my question is not around the mechanism or the methodology behind the payment. It's what, what is this quiet zone feasibility study? And I guess I'll unpack it. Are we starting about? Is it something related to Caltrain horns that are being, you know, sounded on the track? Is that what we're talking about? What is this study for?
Yeah, if I could answer that, yes, that's exactly correct. The idea of the quiet zone is to study if there are ways in which the noise from the train whistles, the train whistles are engaged or required to be engaged because of the railroad crossing. The idea of the quiet zone study is to suggest the possibility or ways to achieve situations with the The idea of the quiet zone study is to suggest the possibility or ways to achieve situations with the crossings, I believe, such that they will not be required to blow their whistles. And so that's the idea of the quiet zone is to, you know, and I'm not an expert on it, so I'm, I'm getting to the limit of my knowledge, but that's the concept. Yeah. And so the idea is that there first has to be a quiet zone study, and then that quiet zone study will probably suggest the need for some improvements to railroad crossings. And so any money that is, that, that we would contribute, that would be left over after the study is completed, could be used for implementation. This would be, I believe, crossing improvements. And the idea is with those crossing improvements, the requirement to run the whistle at all hours of the day and night would be eliminated. I, I think that's a reasonable summary.
I can give you a little bit of context, Commissioner Barnes. So there's a broad-based sort of community-driven effort that's been going on for, for quite some time at this point. And the federal government changed the laws by which sort of essentially train operators, so Caltrain and others, had to utilize their horns for safety at crossings. And there's a large and vocal group of neighbors all throughout Menlo Park and candidly in, in all the residential areas along Caltrain up and down the peninsula, who have organized and have come together to address how to implement quiet zones. And what that, you have to go through a series of steps in order to actually implement these quiet zones, starting with a feasibility study to actually determine what needs to be done in order to satisfy the various statutes that exist from a safety standpoint, and addressing or evaluating each crossing in the cities. I believe Menlo Park has four, but please don't quote me on that. It's throughout the entirety of the city essentially where, where those tracks cross. And the goal is to either through grade separation or otherwise, come up with a redesign or new, newly engineered sort of mitigation at each of the crossings to avoid these trains essentially blowing their horns each time they, they cross the tracks. And so it was an effort that we were enlisted to support, we are in favor of, and, and are so glad to be able to identify it's a, it's a priority that council has taken on as well in response to the community's requests. And it's something that, that was allocated for in terms of this initial funding in the city's budget by city council. And I believe that a transportation planner has actually been hired as well within the city staff now, who's running point on this. And so it's a big initiative on a go-forward basis for the city. We're just sort of indicating our support for that in terms of this supplemental contribution associated with the modifications we're seeking.
And the, the blowing of the horn is essentially a Caltrain's issue. They're the ones that blow their horns, right?
Yeah.
And if they decide to blow them on, it's most likely their, their discretion, correct?
Uh, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's actually a function of the engineering studies. And to the extent that you can demonstrate that the safety of these crossings can be maintained through other mitigation measures, that would then actually lead to the implementation of a quiet zone, which then would prohibit them blowing their horns. So it will no longer be up to them to do so. Now we're getting to the extent of my technical knowledge on the matter, but Marcy, who is on, you know, who made comment earlier, has been leading a terrific effort amongst the community members and neighbors, and has a tremendous wealth of knowledge on this. We've been supporting from a technical standpoint with a variety of civil engineers, just to provide technical support again as, as the city enlists, or is now drafted an RFP to go out and enlist the support of an engineering firm to then evaluate these crossings and come up with, in accordance again with the recent laws that have been enacted, the various sort of modifications to these crossings that could be implemented to therefore lead to quite, a quiet zone being adopted in Menlo Park.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. That's, I don't necessarily live near a train crossing, but I suspect that's a worthy endeavor indeed. Thank you. The, good, Chair, I still, so I was looking at that, then I was looking, and I spent a while looking for the financial impact analysis for this project, and I just was not able to find it in the different documentation going way back from Station 1300 to Springline. And I would say, so the direction that I'm going in here is much like the Menlo Flats staff report that we had just last week. And I was looking for the analogous staff report for Station 1300, and Station 1300 went through a number of different, you know, staff reports iterations, because it was a, it's some complexity to it. But what I was looking for more specifically is, in that, and in the draft DIR review, is that financial impact. You know, the analysis itself, which is a, you know, often done by BAE and is a voluminous document. And then the summary of it, which says, okay, great, you have a project, you have an impact to, you know, the Sequoia Union School District, you have an impact, the Menlo Park School District, you have an impact to, you know, city finances and so forth. And I wasn't able to pull that up. And what I wanted to kind of get a sense of is, you know, we've got 183 new units coming online as it relates to this project. And, you know, being acutely aware of the impacts that the project has in terms of bodies in the school district. And, you know, the $2.1 million went to the downtown amenity fund. And looking for, as we go forward, ways to effectively use the in-lug fees to provide benefits to the, to the community. And I'm not, you know, we're being asked to weigh in on that being the usage of the $300,000. And while I think that the quiet zone is certainly, you know, a reasonable endeavor, I wonder if that shouldn't be city general fund monies? And if the, the impact of 183 new units on the school district, and the fee associated with that, in this case, the $300,000 on the table, shouldn't in fact be directed to that? So I'll come back to that, but that's my, that's my concern, is the, what does your $100,000 go to and does it, is it benefiting, what it should be benefiting based on the new 183 new units coming into the community? And, you know, what's a, what's a greater need? What's the appropriate utilization of general funds versus in-lug fees? What benefits the community? Those types of questions. So I will, I'll circle back to that in a moment, but that's the end. I was, that's fact finding on my part. Thank you, Chair Dorn.
Thank you. I just want to say in passing about the train horns. I live over a mile from the train tracks, and I can hear them go through at one or two o'clock in the morning, high speed. So I think it's a great, it's a great endeavor. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I have maybe five or six points to make, starting with the acknowledgement that some time ago, I also met with Mr. Sanandangi. And I did tour the project in order to better understand the rather wide variety of requests. I have to say, I not only came to understand it, but to rather sympathize with the situation that the Springline group found themselves in taking over this project. And having to solve numerous problems, both from the situation of the design, and also an oversight from the city review process, which we are also aware of from just last week with the Stanford project. So and then, just because it was the most immediate comment, I would like to note that I personally have been involved in the Caltrain Quiet Zones off and on for maybe 10, 12 years. And it's certainly difficult trying to work with a Federal Railroad Act, which is what it comes down to and the reason for the establishment of quiet zones, as opposed to simply being logically asking Caltrain to not use them when they're not necessary. Federal law requires them to blow the horn, a horn which is loud enough to be heard half a mile or a mile away, and which, when heard at less than 500 feet, is actually of a strength sufficient to paralyze the nervous system of men and animals. Which I think actually has happened on occasion. But the bottom line on the quiet zone issue, actually, if I may be so bold, is that the community amenities were a community selection process. And the quiet zones were selected. And I, for one, would not sit in this chair and seek to review or second guess or Monday morning, look at the community's choice of where this additional money should go. So I support that, even if I hadn't been involved in quiet zone efforts in the past. I'd like to note that I've reviewed each item in, in the request, and as expressed on the first page of the staff report. And so without going through item by item, whatever it is, about eight items, I would like to say I find them all logical and supportable. And I would also like to note that the changes envisioned here do not increase the occupancy of the project. They do not downgrade what was previously approved several years ago as a very handsome project that, as our two speakers, public speakers earlier pointed out, is very much anticipated by the, by the neighbors. I'd like to make a specific observation that I think that the additional alcohol permit requests do indeed reflect a convenience, a convenience certainly to the 180-some new units and to the, potentially to the office workers after hours. And I think possibly to the community as a whole, as we hope to share in the benefits of a particularly nice new plaza. And so from my point of view, I don't, I don't want to jump ahead of anyone else who would like to speak, but I would be happy to make a motion regarding the four items in the recommendation when the chair is, find, would find that appropriate.
Thank you. Well, let's see if we have anyone else that wants to speak. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yeah, I have three things in general. I think congratulations on a project that's reaching a successful conclusion, especially through difficult times. It looks really nice, and I can imagine the unique circumstances that you've had to wade through to get here. The one question I have for the applicant is around the parking study. So dedicated parking for the, for the residential units was at one space per unit. Those weren't tied each unit. That was just, there was a sign that said residential parking only. Was that kind of what it was? And then that's being reduced to .44. Is that how I read the study? So there's still some dedicated spaces for residential units, just not one-to-one. Do I interpret that the right way?
Eve, you can jump in on this. Steve has been working with Ferrin Pierce very closely and planning staff as well, so.
So, thank you, Commissioner DeCarty. At the, in the original project, there was, I think, more than one space for each residential unit dedicated to residential parking, reserved for residential parking. In other words, it wasn't, wouldn't be available to any commercial or CSU user. In the current plan, there is no strictly reserved residential parking. This was essentially something that we needed to do in order to make the shared parking study work. Because of course, if you have reserved residential spaces, then during the day, they wouldn't be available to office workers. So that's why we have, and basically, an exclusively non-reserved garage. Residents will find plenty of spaces when they come in in the evening, because most of the commercial people will be gone. I, I'm not, does that answer your question? So this was specifically, in, they did look at an option in the shared parking study for a limited amount of reserved residential parking. But essentially, what we decided was in order to provide more flexibility and affect more cushion, you know, extra spaces, then we, we just simply wouldn't have reserved residential parking.
Yeah, that, that explains it. Thank you. You noted, as you explained, the other part of the, the project about wanting to have more outdoor seating because of the unique circumstances and what looked like longer-term shifts from the pandemic. Did you look at that with parking? And especially with the, as long as you opened up the parking study again with the expectation of the office parking and what that utilization would look like, and did you make any changes?
We, Steve, I can take this one. So we actually reduced the parking that was originally proposed, actually built, and cannibalized a decent amount. I don't have the exact original parking stall count from, from the approval, but it was in the high 990, so call it 998 or so, almost 1,000. We're down at 942 now, partially because we cannibalized that space for these back-of-house operating supporting functions. And really then encouraged and expanded the bike parking, the lockers, the showers, and so on. And then secondarily to that, the ability to maintain and then actually deploy an e-bike fleet for the residents and the tenants and occupants of the building and so on, to really just promote alternative means of transportation. I mean, there, there's no secret that what was built there, and for those of you who've had an opportunity to visit, you know, really, we're going to have a tremendous amount of space. And I don't know if that's going to be 30 years from now or 50 years from now, but we build these buildings to last, you know, 100-plus years. There's going to be a lot of space down there that, that isn't going to be utilized, especially as vehicle ownership, you know, continues hopefully to, to subside, and we rely mostly on, on alternative means of transportation. So we did think about that. There was little that we could do today beyond sort of cannibalize those spaces to really address the back-of-house function. But from a utilization standpoint, we introduced a smart parking system so that everyone can, just on their phone, when they download the Springline app, when you show up as a visitor, even if you're not a resident. So for all the residents in, in the, in the community, you'll have access to our parking structure for, for up to three hours for free. And that really is going to be encouraging folks to, to utilize the space, but again, to, to not sort of abuse the space as a, as a extension of the Caltrain parking lot as an example. But the idea being that we didn't envision dedicated But the idea being that we didn't envision dedicated stalls being used in the way that was originally approved. But really that it would be a much more dynamic and fluid sort of shared scenario. And we really viewed it longer term. Especially as office use, you know, users leave and hopefully these restaurants are occupied sort of in the in the. You know, post working hour timeframe that that nine hundred and forty two parking spaces will really serve. Serve everybody and and will be fully utilized as opposed to before where you just had all this space, which if they were reserved would would really be dead space. Either before hours or after hours, if it was the retail, excuse me, if it was the residential or the office. Validated spaces.
Yeah, thank you for the for the clarification. I'll just say I'm a huge fan. This part of it, I think, makes the project a lot better. I'm all for cannibalization of parking spaces for other utilization. I think this is a crying shame in every community. We're building these buildings for the next thirty, forty, fifty years. And we're going to have just acres and acres of retrofits underground, which is not the best space in the world to use for other purposes. Just pretty much a disaster. So I I really appreciate you sharing from your experience because I hope we can learn from that experience as we approve other projects in the future. And I'm sorry you've been saddled with what you have been in this. My last two questions for staff. So I we understood from the applicant about how they arrived and I think it makes sense at the three hundred thousand dollar level. I just wondered, what else did you consider? Is it reasonable? How would we think that that's reasonable? What other consideration did you look at for potentially having it be higher or lower? Why the three hundred thousand from a staff perspective?
Yes, so the contribution was, that was the applicant's proposal. And staff reviewed it in comparison to the. Cash contribution in twenty seventeen for that additional square footage for that. Bonus level square footage compared with the current bonus level square footage. So that seemed reasonable and it was reviewed with the Public Works Department. That's taking the lead on the Quiet Zone study. So basically. It was just.
Just so I have this right, this is just a straight application of the same percentage pulled forward. Is that what we're doing?
That's basically how how it was viewed, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then also for staff. So I I get that we're moving the FIR from one point five zero to one point five five. I I it it looks like we're narrowly construing this specifically for this project because this is now changing it for other future projects. What are the implications for future projects from a staff perspective? You know, why didn't we make this one point five five to begin with if it's all fine now? I I'm curious about your interpretation, given the care that went into that one point five level to begin with.
Well, so the specific plan amendment is pretty limited. It would only apply to projects that have substantially completed construction. And find that there's deficiencies that need to be addressed, so. It's it, and it's also limited to this. District, the northeast residential district, which is. I believe there's nine parcels in the district currently. So. Basically, I don't think it would affect a lot of projects. It may help a similar project that is built at the maximum bonus level. FAR and then kind of discovers deficiencies when construction is close to complete.
So just a way to say, the other way to say this is as a staff, you're trying to figure out how to box this in as much as possible as opposed to creating a precedence in other places. Is that? What we're trying to do here?
Let's see, I see Mr. Prada maybe he has more to add.
I I think Karina can take that question, but I I do want to add one thing. I should say, I'm acting planning manager Kyle Perata. The maximum development potential in the specific plan, the cap was continued to be in place through this amendment. So the amendment may increase or would increase the. FAR for this project and like Karina mentioned, the other projects in the ECR NER district. But the overall development potential in the cap was left in place. So there was no increase in the total square footage. Just want to kind of. Add that statement as well. So I'll turn back over to Karina if there's any other follow up items, but I wanted to make sure that was stated.
So I think. That basically answers the question. And mainly, we were just looking at this district instead of opening up the whole specific plan.
Good, thank you. I mean, I'll I'll just add to as long as I'm speaking on this, the generalities all look good to me. I'm I'm. Appreciate the thoughtfulness from the staff perspective and and the applicant of trying to work through this. I think in many ways, you made it a better project and better for the community. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ricks.
Yeah, thank you. I just for context. I would like to say, well, first that I I think this is a very good way to find a solution. Where a major project that we've all been looking forward to. Was caught up a little bit in the. Exact wording and numbers of the plan for Northeast Residential. And also, just for context, I'll note that. The plan for Southeast, which is for the quite similar project that is being built by Stanford. Their ratio is not one point five. But is actually one point seven five bonus level. On. Page E sixty four of the specific plan. And I could relate the history to why they're different, but rather than stir up. Passages of the past, I'll just note that. Raising from one point five to one point five five is a very small step in not. Setting a new bar by any means. Just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. You're on mute.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Dorn. Question if it's permissible through the chair to staff as it relates to. Community amenities for the downtown specific plan. Is there? Was there a list that was developed? For the downtown specific plan, for instance, as was developed for Connect Menlo. Is there a prescriptive list of amenities to pick from?
So there is a list of kind of suggested amenities or ideas. That's on page E seventeen of the specific plan, but they're not. If they're not meant to be to be limiting, so. It's meant for each project to propose their own benefit and then to be reviewed at a public hearing.
Thank you. That's that's what I had thought and remember from that, from the plan and one of the reasons. Why the Connect Menlo was prescriptive in terms of, and this is I'm reciting this from my recollection, one of the reasons why Connect Menlo was trying to be prescriptive. Was in order to get, you know, some concrete ideas and bring some some clarity in the process. So I will say that contrary to. Mr. Riggs's assertion, there is not in fact a prescriptive list to be pulled from for the purposes of. Of committee of the community amenities and it's in fact a discretionary process to be. On a project by project basis. So what I. You know, what I want to highlight is. The Quiet Zone may be a very, very worthy and wonderful project for the city to to undertake. And that's, that's not what I certainly am. Am am talking to. It's it's important for the city. What I do. Find interesting is. You know, we've got a prescriptive process for the Connect Menlo. And then we say that in fact, it's not important to go through that process because. You know, that process doesn't bear weight now a couple of years later. But yet when we don't have a process for this, it becomes related back to something which. I'm not sure. Exist in specificity on a project by project basis and I. So so I just don't know that this is the right use of this money because. I don't see a transparency in the selection of it for this. There's other than. You know. Other than the assertion of the applicant that it's an important thing, I'm not convinced that it outweighs other opportunities. To use the money now. Money is due and it should be used to the benefit of the community. Actually, different benefits for it. And it's the process as well that I'm not entirely comfortable with. And I'd rather see the money used for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of hands raised. Mr. Son Dodgy, I will get to you, but Commissioner Riggs has had his hand up first, so. You're on mute.
Thank you, Chair. Just a note of clarification, I did not refer to a. Hallowed list as part of the downtown specific plan. I referenced that it was a community based choice. However, I did so based on the statements of the applicant earlier today. And through the chair, if I may ask, staff, Ms. Endemire to. Just reference. How the, again, reference how the. Community. Asked for or 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 did they ask for this increment, this relatively small increment of funds to be used?
So in this case, it was just a proposal the applicant made that staff found reasonable. But as I I think I previously mentioned, there is money has been budgeted by the city for Quiet Zone studies, so. And I believe that was influenced by community input. I think that kind of relates back in that way. If that answers the question.
It does.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris.
Hi, um, like several of the other commissioners, I commend you, commend the applicant. I think this. I appreciate how you were able to correct several deficiencies that existed when you were when you took over the project. I appreciate the addition of the more open entry with the ADA compliance versus a separate door. I like how you. Managed to make that into a more of a benefit for everyone by taking. And like Ms. Abramowitz, I look forward to sitting in a cafe or in the courtyard or the beer truck and enjoying that setting. So thank you for that. I have just a quick question, similar to Commissioner DeCarty's question about the three hundred, about how we arrived at the three hundred thousand. I have also a question about how we arrived at the sixty three thousand in the in Lufy for the BMR. And you do, I guess this is a question to the applicant because I it sounds like maybe you, the applicant was able to provide. A recommendation and then staff found that recommendation agreeable, but if you could take me through the justification to paying in Lufy of the like half group A and half. Group B, like half office and half CSU. I was referring to in your, in the applicant report on, I think it was page hundred and nine. Of eight of the staff report, so versus a higher amount. So if you could just take me through the justification for that, I I think that would be the applicant.
Yeah, Cyrus, would you like me to take that?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So one of the oddities about this project is that. The amount of office and CSU in in the twenty seventeen approval was not a specific number, but it was a range. Each of them had a play of about, you know, ten or thirteen thousand, something like that. So it was in the staff report from the twenty seventeen approval, it was stated that the overall amount of. Commercial, that is CSU plus office together was around two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. And with the additions that we're making, that number comes to two hundred and twenty four thousand. So there's a net addition of around four thousand square feet of commercial. But because each of those, the CSU and the office would state it with, you know, an acceptable range. Bearing about, you know, you know, thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet. You couldn't, it was hard to point and say, well, exactly how much we're adding of this. Both the office and the CSU and our proposed project are near the upper end of the ranges that was allowed. So I looked at it in different ways and, you know, it seemed like the fairest and most reasonable way of doing this. Was to just say to take the increase, the overall increase of four thousand square feet and. And and divide that up into, and then for each of those two thousand square feet. It was just simple math to apply that to the applicable in lieu rate. Does that? Does that explain?
Yeah.
There are different, there are different ways to do the numbers. I mean, I did them like four or five different ways and 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 this, this is kind of in the middle of the ballpark.
Yeah, I just was trying to think through. I understand that it's difficult to figure out what's an office area increase and what is CSU area increase. I'm not sure, you know, I might have liked you to pay a little more. Then, so I I don't know what my other commissioners are feeling on this. It's, I mean, it's not a huge chunk of money, but I I I could see an argument for. Maybe that the office area increases or that the CSU area increase is less.
Yeah, the the range, for example, of the allowable CSU space was between eighteen thousand six hundred. To twenty nine thousand. So we're in at twenty five thousand or, you know, a little over six thousand increase. And for the office, you know, we we are again are right in the middle of the range. You know, we're not at the upper end of the range where. In both cases, both the office and the CSU were about four thousand square feet. Lower than the upper end of their range. So again, there are different ways to do the math. I'll be quite honest on that. But I, but you know, we think this is reasonable and and the Housing Commission ended up approving this proposal unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, we have other commissioners, Commissioner DeCarty.
Wanted to follow up on the answer to Commissioner Barnes's question about the. The funding for the noise study. So if we've got it funded right now. And. I guess just what's the difference if the three hundred thousand goes into the general pool as opposed to this specific project? What's functionally the difference? And who would be deciding? I assume if the way this is played out right now, we're deciding that it goes to cover the study unless. I we don't need that much for the study and then it goes back into the pooled fund. If it goes into the pooled fund and we already have the study. Taken care of and then the study costs more, who decides in the pooled fund to cover the additional cost of the study? This is a question of staff, I think.
Yes, I I believe the additional money from this public benefit would ensure that the city can hire a consultant and go forward with the project. So. It provides some certainty in that sense.
So if it went into the pooled fund and not for the specific project, who would ultimately decide to direct it to this specific project if it were so desired? If we did not do that tonight, who would make that decision?
Well, I I mean, it would likely be the city council. But I think with with it being approved, of course, the planning commission is making a recommendation tonight. On the public benefit, which is part of the Development Agreement Amendment. So in this case, it the where the money goes to is also up to the city council directly. With the planning commission making a recommendation tonight on whether or not you support the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I'm still confused. So if we make a recommendation tonight, this recommendation goes to city councils, then they'll do what they will with it. If we determine tonight that we actually would prefer this not to go to specific projects, but go into a pooled fund. Then you're saying that the city council will direct where that pooled fund goes or is that something that you all as staff would ultimately make a recommendation like in a budget? Proposal or what what what's the approval?
proposal? Or what, what, what's the approval process for undesignated funds that were, that would be in that pool if in fact they want that route? Or or anyway, that's my question.
Maybe I can take that, Commissioner DeCarty. So if, if the development agreement was negotiated and/or ultimately adopted by the council and said the payment of $300,000 for the city's general fund, ultimately, you're correct, the city council's budget setting process would identify how that money would be used. You know, certainly there could be some discretion for staff to allocate it to certain projects, but ultimately that would have to be allocated through the general fund to a project that ultimately the council would approve as part of the budget setting process. So there, there certainly would be additional council oversight of where that money ultimately gets spent. But if it's in the general fund, the city would have a lot more discretion, if you will, to propose different different uses for the funds. And so I do also want to clarify, I think the, the way the development agreement is set up right now, the $300,000 has kind of three potential purposes. One of them ultimately being if there is any remaining funds after the first two items that, which were related to the Quiet Zone study, that the, the additional money be sent, set aside in the city's public benefit fund for the city's discretion, what to use it for. And so Karina might be able to explain more about that fund itself as it relates to the specific plan.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you. So.
Yeah, so that's, that fund allows public improvements, or infrastructure improvements within a specific plan area. So it's, it's pretty broad of the, the type of projects that could be covered by it.
Okay, that's helpful. I'll just say I'm, I'm generally, I'll just say appreciative of Commissioner Barnes's comments tonight and the principle he's trying to get at. Thank you for the clarification, staff. I appreciate it.
Okay, do we have other commissioners that would wish to speak further at this time?
Yeah, at this point, I would like to make a motion. A motion to further staff report to recommend that the City Council adopt the ordinance amending the specific plan to approve the architectural control revision, to approve the use permit revision, which includes the diesel generator and the alcohol determination. And recommend that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement accordingly for, and I believe that would be an update of a development agreement for the vested rights in the city to secure a public benefit.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Barnes.
So I am going to, I'm going to vote against it having nothing to do with the merits of what the applicant is trying to achieve in making this a successful project. And you know, there's, I don't think there's anyone who wants this project to be more successful than I do. I, it's a benefit and a bonus to our city. I, my brain isn't working to the point where I can come up with the machinations of trying to split out the public benefit piece. It's just, you know, I, I don't, I don't get it. And I am never, I, well, not never, I try not to be a protest vote because I think that's ridiculous. I think it can vote on the merits and policy of specific items and my personal preference doesn't matter. I do think in this instance, I don't believe that the community benefit betting has taken place. So for that reason, specific to that, and if this comes back and it fails and there's a ability to make a motion, I don't know what it would look like to have that be tabled and everything else be approved. I certainly would, you know, endeavor to get on that path. But for, for this particular vote and for that reason, and some of the inconsistencies I see in this process, unfortunately, having nothing to do with the merit to the project, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs. That was a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes, but I would like to say that there are inconsistencies between the general plan as far as it impacts Connect Menlo and the specific plan. And so hopefully one day, things will line up, but right now they, they don't really. And I do vote yes.
Thank you. I'm going to vote yes as well. So the motion carries with a vote of five in favor, one against, and one absent. Thank you very much. That will close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We have informational items from Ms. Sendemeyer.
If I could just thank you commissioners very much before I log off the camera. Thank you again for indulging us and giving us your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Very thorough presentation. Ms. Sendemeyer.
Yes, so we have a little bit of a break. The next Planning Commission meeting will be in three weeks on December 13th. So we haven't finalized the agenda for that one. And then the final meeting of the year will be December 20th. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I just ask why we're skipping a week in our normal cycle? And then having two weeks in a row?
Yeah, it's, we're avoiding Jewish holidays. I think Hanukkah. There are certain specific dates that we are avoiding. So to be inclusive of everyone.
Okay. December 20th, we may have trouble getting a quorum, but I guess we will, we'll see across that bridge when we get to it. Any questions from Ms. Sendemeyer? Okay. I will close tonight's meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Chair Dorn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah, you as well, everybody.
Thank you. May everyone.